Welcome, everyone, to the May 15, 2023 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Weggie.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil. Alderman Shelton is absent.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation, saying none will be so approved? Move down to Item 4, Announcements, Appointments, Proclamations, and Recognitions. We have one item, and in your documents or in your materials, you know that Gary Truman is on the Library Board. His term is expiring, and so they've approached me and asked for a replacement, and the person they came up with is Laura McAllister. So I would ask for a motion to appoint or to approve my appointment of Laura McAllister to the Brentwood Library Board.
No move.
Second? Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us down to Item 5, Citizen Comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes. Just state your name, please.
I live in the York Village area, and I'm here on behalf of the Brentwood Police Foundation Board.
Chief Burke Meyer on Florence Avenue. I'm also on the board.
Lester is also on the board. He's not able to join us this evening. First of all, we wanted to invite all of you to attend the first event we'll have on June 15 from 5 until 8 o'clock in the evening. We are raising funds for our inaugural project, the K-9 Project. We are looking to purchase a dog, Red, and train him as a search-and-rescue dog for the police officials. We are also looking to equip a vehicle. That is the biggest financial commitment that we'll have. Our mission is to support the Brentwood Police Foundation and to, by providing resources to advance the proficiency, safety, and mental well-being of the officers so they can more effectively protect and serve the community. We are a 501(c)(3) recognized organization.
Recording in progress.
So all of the donations to the organization are in fact tax deductible. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If there's anything you'd like to add.
Any questions about this? Yes, go right ahead.
We have acquired a dog. Training for that dog will start in the middle of July, but there's a lot that goes with that. So we are definitely still looking to raise quite a bit of funds.
And when does this dog go into service?
It should be in service about the end of August.
What kind of dog is it?
Labrador.
Labrador.
He's going to be trained as a search-and-rescue dog.
Okay.
So very friendly, very outgoing, yes.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else care to address the board? Now, we will move on. Let's move down to Mayor and Alderman Reports. First up is the mayor. I just have, just to report back, that the legislative session has finally ended, and we made it. We're still in business, even though they're doing everything they can to take away all of our sources of revenue. Still, the thing that we do have to be concerned about, I fully expect it's going to come back next session, is an attempt again to exclude the sale of groceries from sales tax, and you all know how important that would be to us and to a lot of other municipalities. So we will be working with other elected officials to see what we can do to educate the elected officials down in Jefferson City about what impact it would have on local governments, not just Brentwood or any of the other municipalities in St. Louis County, but across the entire state. It would be devastating. That is it for the mayor. Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. Public safety is currently scheduled, I believe, for May 24. Whenever there's five Wednesdays in a month, I always, I'm going to have to change that. So I'm just letting everybody know, we do have an agenda. We will have a meeting this month. I just am not exactly sure when. We're going to have to get it changed. So I'll work on that, and I will bring more information to both the members of that committee and the rest of the board and the public when I can. Thank you.
Alderwoman Tyce.
The Ward 1 meeting for this month is on Tuesday, May 23 at the Community Center at 6:30 p.m.
Alderwoman Sims.
Just one thing. The June Ways and Means meeting that would normally happen on the first Thursday of the month, which would, in this case, would be June 1, will need to be reset. That date's still TBD, but we will be having a meeting at some point in June.
Alderman Weggie.
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller.
No report.
Alderman Gould.
Yes, the Communications Committee meeting had to be moved. The new date will be May 30 at 5:30 p.m. Just so happens that it's also the same night as the Ward 3 meeting scheduled, which is scheduled at 6:30 at the REC Center. So come here for the Communications Committee meeting and then join me back over at the REC Center for a Ward 3 meeting.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
No report.
Okay. That brings us down to the consent agenda. I have just, I've asked Craig to explain, I'm sorry, did I miss you? Oh, I'm sorry, City Administrator report. Thank you.
No worries. Then I can roll right into the consent.
He can stay right there, yeah.
Yes. Good evening. Craig Schiller with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. So since the last Board of Alderman meeting, starting with construction costs, $1,439,424.83 has been spent. Going on a soft cost, $97,861.2 has been spent on material testing, legal, project management, design, marketing, event, and surveying fees. Going to the categories of funding, the city received an additional reimbursement from the 319 grant for the storage ponds that they're working on on the eastern part of the project in Phase 2. Also, I wanted to note that, you know, this upper section, the categories of funding, while it includes the 2018, 2019 COPs, we have spent beyond those COP dollars. While we have pulled some money from additional funding sources to allow investments to bring the most money into the city, everything's okay. We're within, in about a month, we will have expended all the COP dollars. So that means that we'll be going into all these additional categories of funding. So you can see all the different types of funding on the left-hand side. That includes grants. That includes the 2018 COP investment income. That includes the West Community Credit Union. So we're on that part of the project where the COP dollars are nearly running out, but thankfully, we've got these additional funds to...
No, you're not so soon.
Getting thrown all sorts of things with alarms and mics going dead.
Well, as we're, if we're coming to the end of the COP monies, then it sounds like we're coming to the end of the Brentwood Bound project.
Yes, we are wrapping up. We see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Great. Okay, do we have any questions for Craig? Not, thank you. And so now we will move to the consent agenda. And before I ask the board if they have any requests to remove anything off there or any questions, I've asked Craig to address, I think it's Resolution Number 1442, because there was a little confusion in the way that it was written up. It said that the scope of work is, results in an increase of $147,000. So if you would, address that, please.
Yeah, so this is a change order to Keely. I think there was a mistake where the Board Doc's number took the net change from previously authorized change orders, which is 147. The correct amount is $37,142.58. So that would be the amount that, if you all approve it, that would be the correct amount for the change order.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any requests by the members of the board to remove any item off the consent agenda, or do you have any questions about the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
All right. Now we are on to old business, Bill Number 6456. I believe there is, Chief, you want to address the board on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Update since our last meeting, we continue to negotiate with the landlord's attorney. Mr. Jones, representing the three cities, is continuing to work on that. Progress is being made. We met last Thursday. They still do not have a completed lease agreement for tonight, though.
Okay.
So I just wanted to address that.
Okay. Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. Chief, at the last meeting, we spoke, and the attorney that was representing, he was on Zoom when he was here, we also brought up some concerns with regard to the configuration of the bylaws, specifically the bylaw sections that refer to the fact that the board, once it's put together, could, by majority vote, spend more than $1,000 contract on behalf of the consortium itself and bind the cities that make up that consortium with their votes. And it was expressed by a number of people on this board, including myself, that that was troubling, that if we're, you know, if we're going to cede control or power to a committee that's not elected by the public, and we're going to give them the ability to contract on our behalf for land or for items, to spend money that is taxpayer money, we've got to retain some control over that process. And we, I think we actually made a suggestion, a couple of different suggestions. One was to change the bylaws such, and I think you actually had this suggestion in the first place, saying that another board that you serve on with regard to the training purposes, they require unanimous consent on particular items. I think that was a fine suggestion, and I would also want to see some language that retains some sort of ratification control on the cities themselves. So even though the three cities get together and decide to create this collection, the cities themselves, who are, after all, the purse strings for this thing, they still retain some control over how that money is being spent. Do you have any idea, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for doing that, do you have any idea whether or not there's been any work on? I didn't see any changes to the bylaws from last meeting to this. I didn't know what the status was on that.
So in our conversation last Thursday with Mr. Jones, he said what needs to happen first is create the commission. The commission then approves the bylaws, and the change would take place if the commission approves those bylaws.
How do we control the process whereby they debate the bylaws if we create the commission in the first place? I don't understand that. Maybe that's a question for our city attorney. Maybe I'm just backwards in my thinking, but if we create a commission and empower them, how do we keep control over what the bylaws say?
I would think you could address that in the terms of the intergovernmental agreement itself. So maybe that's where we ought to look to, putting in the measures that you're concerned, and I'd be happy to explore that with Mr. Jones.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That the bylaws have to conform to the intergovernmental agreement.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one question. I had that same question, so I'm glad you took it on and did so thoroughly with it. But I did have one clarification question, kind of minor, I guess, but in the scheme of things. When it was asked of you all about how to manage water, I guess, and I think the way that the answer is, is that utilities would be brought in. I think the question, at least how I took the question to you, I wasn't the one that asked it, was how do we manage, what do we need to do in order to manage the water that's going to be put out over the land?
Sure.
By all of these training exercises, which is a fair amount of water constantly being pumped out? You know, what do we need to do to manage that? Do we need to hold, create a basin to hold back the water so that it seeps in back in?
Right.
Recirculates, whatever. I don't...
I'm only speaking off other training facilities in St. Louis County. I'm only aware of one that has a retention area, and that's for their entire site. Their station, the training facility, it's a number of acres, so they'd have retention on site. No other, including the newest one that was constructed, have retention on site for runoff.
Okay. So the runoff just would be designed to go wherever the...
We would certainly have to comply with permitting process through MSD, for sure.
Anybody else guess? Alderman Weggie.
I have to admit, I'm a little confused, right? So we started talking about a lease at first, and there were some issues with that. And then last meeting, it was, we're not approving the lease, we're approving the commission, and then there were some issues with that, and I'm still not clear, if there is a vote tonight, what we're voting on. So there's a memo, there's an intergovernmental agreement that says we will spend $500,000 as well as the $6,000. Is the vote tonight that we're approving the commission and we're committing to $506,000 going into this commission?
Alderman Weggie, I think I can answer that. My suggestion is that we table this.
Okay.
Matter again until we get a revised intergovernmental agreement.
Okay.
Back from our attorneys.
All right. I retract my question. Thank you.
That was a good question, yeah. Alderman Lockmiller.
I like that idea, and can we also add the lease be in there, too?
In the document?
Yeah, for tabling when we meet again and see the lease, too.
Yes, yeah. The takeaway that I had of the last meeting is, I thought it would be best if you all had an opportunity to ratify any lease, any long-term agreement, whether it's a lease, whether it's construction of this fire training center. Secondly, I thought it would be nice if it was unanimous at the commission level, the members, and I thought those things needed to be put into the intergovernmental agreement. And I'm hearing from our city attorney, that's probably the best way to do it. So hopefully, by the time of the next meeting, we will have that in place in front of you along with the lease. But if you all do approve the intergovernmental agreement, which is simply, again, creating this commission, then you would also, under the terms of that, I envision that you would have the ability, it would be necessary that you have the ability to approve the lease. So with that being the case, I do. Bill number... So there's a motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Okay, I think we can just do this with a voice. Yes.
Oh, I would just, I think, and to carry on what our city attorney said, that the bylaws conform with the changes in the lease.
Right.
So I think it makes sense that we have a conclusion on all three of those documents.
Right.
To where they, where they're proposed final form.
Sounds good. Okay, when we will get together with Mr. Jones and make sure he understands, yeah, we will. I just want to make sure that, before you vote, that that's the game plan, is that we will get together with him and make sure that it incorporates all these changes. I think we just do a voice photo on this, so the motion is to table Bill Number 6456 to a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us down to Bill Number 6459. Can we get a second read of 6459 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6459, second reading and consideration for adoption in ordinance pending sections 400.1320 and 400.1330 regarding conditional use of property in the A and B single-family zoning districts for adult daycare services.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6459 into ordinance form.
No move.
Second? Chever?
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Yes.
Excuse me. Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6459 will become ordinance number 5090.
Great, thank you. Brings us to new business. We have six items. First up is a request for an extension to Ordinance 5023, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit in site development plan approval for the Animal Protective Association of Missouri at 1705 South Hanley Road. Whitney, are you handling this?
Yes, this was approved last year of June 21, and due to staff changes and other concerns, they have not been able to issue their, submit for their building permit yet. So they have requested a 90-day extension. The code does allow 180 days, so staff recommends approving it at 180 days just to allow for any further delays should anything come up.
Okay. Do you have any questions about this? If not, can we get a motion to approve the request for an extension to Ordinance 5023?
No move for 180 days.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka. Alderwoman Tyce.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up is another request for an extension, and this is to Ordinance 5024, an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 200 Hanley Industrial Court from PD Plan Development Overlay District to UD Urban Development District, and granting site plan and conditional use permit approval for a 256-unit apartment complex and fitness facility. Mr. Doster, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Mike Doster. I'm the land use attorney on the development team for Cornerstone Brentwood LLC, which is the developer on this proposed project. As you may remember, this project is a $100 million project, and my client is trying to deliver a first-class development to this community. And of course, that means that there is complicated and substantial financing involved in putting this project together. The environment that we're all living through right now has not helped. Interest rates have increased, costs have increased, and lending sources are becoming a little bit more facetious about their approach to financing. We're still working on it. We're still gathering information. We want to go forward with this project and this community, and we would appreciate an extension of one year so that we have more opportunity to hopefully work our way through the market and the financing sources and put our project together.
Thank you. Whitney, just for clarification, the, this is for an extension up to one year, and the one that was just in front of the board was for 180 days. But you said that was the maximum for that one?
Well, it's not really the maximum.
Okay.
There's two different sections in the code. The ordinance that approved the site development plan granted a year, and it can be extended. The site development plan can be granted up to 180 days each time, up to a year, and the CUP is, can be granted up to a year as well.
Okay.
Since they had only asked for 90 days, I said, well, let's just do the 180. In this case, they're asking for a year, so instead of having them come back each 180 days, I thought just granting them a year would be fine.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant on this request? If not, can we get a motion to approve the request for an extension, Ordinance 5024, up to one year?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Brings us to...
Your mayor and board.
Thank you. Brings us to Bill Number 6461. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill Number 6461, first reading, an ordinance approving the Railway-Highway Crossing Improvement Program Agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission regarding the Union Pacific Crossing on Brentwood Boulevard.
All right, good evening. This has been a work in progress for many years, but it's exciting tonight that we're finally here negotiating with MoDOT. And Union Pacific is a lengthy process, but it's exciting because when the city passed the referendum, they said they would connect the trail to Marshall Road. This is a critical piece to allowing that trail connection to happen. Also, when you all approved the Graves Greenway Agreement, that was part of that condition, that $3 million, is you would, in fact, take the trail from Rogers Parkway down to Marshall Road. And then, lastly, then, when the East-West Gateway Grant passed, it's $1 million that you all received, this was a part of that as well. So this project, you know, has to happen for all those reasons. There's a lot of monies tied to it. To further all the money that's going towards this project, we've been able to successfully negotiate this cost-year agreement where MoDOT's going to pay 85%, and Union Pacific's going to pay 5%, which means that Brentwood only has to pay 10% for all these improvements in the Union Pacific right away. So that's over $1 million worth of improvements that you guys will pay 10 cents in the dollar. So it's been nearly five years to get to this point. We've had a lot of ups and downs. Ebola's been with me on some of those challenging calls to make sure people hold to their agreements, but we finally got this, and we're excited, and this is a big step forward. With the passage of Bills 6461, 6462, if you all decide to pass that, we'll send these to East-West Gateway, and then they will allow us to go out to bid for that GRG Connector Part B. These are the last pieces of the puzzle to start that project. And then, last thing I'll mention is, there's one final agreement that will come forward in another month. It's on Union Pacific's timeframe, and that's the maintenance agreement. So we've talked to you all before about how the city has to pay the maintenance of the surfacing and the lights. You all approved that a few years ago. This will be a final agreement from Union Pacific to ultimately just formalize that. So that's the third and final agreement for that crossing, but that one's going to come forth maybe at the June meeting if Union Pacific hits their timelines.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions for Craig on this? Alderman Gould.
Craig, this agreement, this was, this was kind of holding up the progress on that, right?
Correct.
Is there anything else that's holding up with this agreement where we're ready to...
Yeah, so we have to issue these to East-West Gateway. They have a 30-day review period, and then they'll give the city the blessing to go out to bid. Then we go out to bid, and then we'll bring a contractor to you all, probably late summer, and then we'll start construction after that.
So your general estimate of when this could be constructed is what?
Starting late summer, if all the approvals happen, and then it would be done spring of '24.
Okay. And then does the path design or anything like that with the wetland arboretum area, because if it's going to go adjacent to that, is it, it doesn't change anything, correct?
Yeah. The alignment of this trail doesn't change. I don't know what Eric's plans are with Arboretum, but it's, I haven't heard of any intersections yet at this point. This trail alignment, I think, is going to stay intact.
So we're, plans and everything are ready to go?
Yes, yeah. They've already been sent to the county for permitting, and MSD's already given us approval. The one caveat I'll mention is, this is the bid package for us to go out to bid, to build the trail and do the Brentwood Boulevard work and the Russell Trail. The Union Pacific surfacing and lights, that has to be done by Union Pacific. So I don't really know what their schedule is yet, and when I say we're going to be done spring of '24, that's for everything that we're bidding out and controlling. The Union Pacific surfacing and lights, that has to be done by Union Pacific. So I don't really know what their schedule is yet. And when I say we're going to be done spring of twenty-four, that's for everything that we're bidding out and controlling. Union Pacific, it's a, they're on their own time schedule, so that, I would imagine it'll be done later than spring of twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Alderman Plufka?
Can you just remind the public, we're talking about the final section that runs on the east side of Brentwood Boulevard from that crossing and that area south to the connection of the Great River Greenway as it comes out of
Marshall.
Marshall Road.
Marshall Road, that's it.
Yeah. So this would release the work to occur from Brentwood Park going south on the east side of Brentwood Boulevard, connecting it to the current Gray Rivers Greenway alignment that's at Marshall and Brentwood. It also allows, part of this project is taking Brentwood Park along Russell and connecting to the new Brentwood Sports Park.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Waggie?
I would just say kudos. I mean, I remember early days of Brentwood Bound, how hard it was to deal with some of these organizations, so I can, can't imagine how hard this was behind the scenes, so congratulations. And I would make a motion for a second reading of Bill number sixty-four six-one.
Get a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, we had a motion and a second for a second read. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bills number sixty-four sixty-one by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-one, second reading and consideration for adoption in ordinance approving the railway highway crossing improvement program agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission regarding the Union Pacific Crossing on Brentwood Boulevard.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill number sixty-four sixty-one into ordinance form.
Second.
The motion by Alderman Gould, second by Alderwoman Tyce. Any discussion? Alderman?
Just to say, just to echo what Alderman Waggie already said, this was the most problematic piece of this multifaceted project, and it's just so great to see that it's, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, no pun intended. It's actually quite amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill number sixty-four six-one will become ordinance number five-zero nine-one.
Thank you. Brings us down to item D under new business. That's Bill number sixty-four sixty-two. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-two, first reading in ordinance approving the supplemental agreement for highway rail crossing improvements agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission regarding the Union Pacific Crossing on Brentwood Boulevard.
Okay.
So I'll keep this abbreviated. This is an agreement between Brentwood, MoDOT, Union Pacific. So there needs, the first, the last agreement you all approved was Brentwood and MoDOT, because there's additional work out of the Union Pacific that MoDOT's paying for, which is a benefit to the city of Brentwood. That's the Brentwood-MoDOT cost share. Six-four six-two, that's in front of us now, is the MoDOT-Union Pacific-Brentwood agreement that just takes in place all the work that's going to occur, and then also the payment structures that are occurring.
Okay. We would like to have a second read on this tonight.
Motion for a second read?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on a motion to have a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill number sixty-four sixty-two by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-two, second reading and consideration for adoption in ordinance approving the supplemental agreement for highway rail crossing improvements agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission regarding the Union Pacific Crossing, excuse me, on Brentwood Boulevard.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill number sixty-four sixty-two in ordinance form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Please?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? By a vote of seven to zero, Bill number sixty-four six-two will become ordinance five-zero nine-two.
Thank you. Brings us to item DE, Bill number sixty-four sixty-three. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-three, first reading in ordinance pending Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, and establishing revised no parking zone on the north side of Brentwood Place, east of Brentwood Boulevard.
Dan, are you handling this for us?
Okay. This item was discussed in Public Works Committee, so this would be Brentwood Place, you know, by the mobile station. The north side currently didn't have a prohibition along that edge from Brentwood Boulevard going east over to eighty-seven, eighty-three. But there is a prohibition on the south side. There just isn't any signs on the south side next to the vacant building. So what this will do is, by changing the code, it'll prevent people from parking on that south side of the mobile, north side of Brentwood Place, from the point of intersection with Brentwood Boulevard at about a hundred and five feet east. So basically, along their driveway and by the fire hydrants and the utility pole. And you can see, we already started painting yellow along there, but we need to change this so that we can put signs up. And then the proposal was to put up like a no parking, stopping, standing at any time sign on both sides. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about this?
Yeah, I'll just add some comment there. I mean, this is, this has been an issue. Residents have been bringing this up, that, you know, trucks are parking there. You know, I think by making this code change on the north side, I think that helps with enforcement, because I'm not sure you could actually legally park because of the fire hydrant and the entrances anyway. But I think this will just codify it and allow our police to enforce a little bit better. And I think the sign changes are good for clarification, too. And then it's an enforcement thing.
Anybody else? We would like to have a second read on this.
I'll make a motion for a second reading. And I'd also like to point out that the efficiency with which Public Works Department handled this means that we should probably lift all of Public Safety's agenda and give it to Public Works. I'm just throwing that in at the end.
We can handle all no parking signs, but you do everything else, buddy.
Second.
I am making a motion for second reading. All right, we have a motion and a second for the second reading. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill number sixty-four sixty-three by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-three, second reading and consideration for adoption in ordinance pending Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, and establishing revised no parking zone on the north side of Brentwood Place, east of Brentwood Boulevard.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to perfect sixty-four sixty-three into ordinance form.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? By a vote of seven to zero, Bill number sixty-four six-three will become ordinance five-zero nine-three.
Thank you. And that brings us down to the last item under new business, and that's Bill number sixty-four sixty-four. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-four, first reading in ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Hanley-Eager redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain other actions relating thereto.
Thank you. Bo, are you handling this for us?
Yes, I am happy to report to the board that the Meridian Brentwood Development, otherwise known as Hanley-Eager Tax Increment Financing District, has been fully paid off. Congratulations to the board. That is an awesome development, and you all should be proud of having it in your community here. So the recommendation tonight, because this debt has been paid off, is that the special allocation fund be dissolved, and that all remaining surplus be, staff be authorized to send those to the different taxing entities. Also happy to share with you that starting in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, I've made that change in board docs, that the city should expect to receive, and this is an estimate, six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in additional revenue coming to the city.
Annually.
Annually, yes.
Great. Great, great, great. That's a hats off to the board that came in front of you all many, many years ago.
Absolutely.
Okay, we would like to have a second read on this also tonight. Mr. Alderman Plufka?
I have a question before I make a motion for second reading. Is the only remaining TIF Hanley Station? Is that set to expire?
That is set to expire. I don't remember the date right off the top of my head, but in
In this fiscal year? Okay.
But it's soon.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I'll confirm that and send it to you.
Okay, I was just curious, wonder anything else? I would make a motion for a second reading of Bill number sixty-four sixty-four.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill sixty-four sixty-four by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-four six-four, second reading and consideration for adoption in ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Hanley-Eager redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Can we get a motion to, Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill number sixty-four sixty-four into ordinance form.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?